Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Old Bridge Township Board of Education, the first one for the 2014-15 school year pursuant to bylaws and applicable laws of the state of New Jersey. The board does operate its meetings consistent with provisions of Robert's Rules of Order. What? We, as the Board of Education, acknowledge that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the board office, schools, and on cable, Vision Channel 118, Verizon Files, Channel 24, and by filing such notice with township clerk. At this time, I'd like to roll call Mr. Mara.
Porcelli.
Here.
DePrima.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hopman.
Here.
Mongan.
Here.
Singh.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Andriani.
Here.
The quorum exists.
Thank you. At this time, if we could rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence if you wouldn't mind to remain standing. In memoriam, we'd like to move the board acknowledge the death of Joseph Sharar, an HVAC technician from the Maintenance Department, and express the board and central administration's deepest sympathy to his family and friends, if we could just have a minute. Thank you very much. Ms. Mongan, could I call upon you to read the Code of Ethics? Would you mind this evening? Thank you.
Every board member will refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. At this time, we have some administrative changes that we need to read into record. Mr. Mara?
To members of the public, there are changes affecting seven separate motions on the published agenda. A schedule of five of those changes is in the rear of the studio available for your review, and I will verbally identify the two that were received late this afternoon. For board members, the five administrative corrections have been made on your agenda that was in your packet and are highlighted in blue. The two that are not on the schedule for the public and not reflected in the board member agendas are as follows. On page 19, at the very top of the page, item AA is deleted. On page 22, about halfway down the page, item MM is deleted. And those are the administrative corrections for tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mara. At this time, I need a motion to accept those changes.
And the addendum.
Thank you, and that will include the addendum?
Yes, it will.
All right, Mr. Porcelli, thank you very much. I need a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Mr. Mara?
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the addendum and the administrative corrections pass.
Thank you. I have some feedback, quite a bit. We're good? Okay, thank you. I thought it was the same one. All right, apparently, I skipped approval of minutes. I apologize. That would be on your agenda, page 2, Roman number 7. If I could have a motion to accept the approval of minutes?
Dunn makes a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do I have a second?
Mongan will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Mr. Mara?
Porcelli.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Our student representative is still on vacation, so he will join us at our next scheduled meeting, or she will join us at our next scheduled meeting. Superintendent's report, Mr. Cedidino?
I have two things I'd like my team to report on today. The first is Mr. Mara. We'll let him go and do progress towards goals. I'd like him to do a brief report on some of our summer projects as we get ready for the 2014-15 school year.
Presently, the district has undertaken projects in eight of our schools. Six projects relate, six buildings relate to the kindergarten projects. All of those projects are on schedule and scheduled to be completed at the end of next week. The McDivitt Bathroom Project, again, is also underway and is scheduled to be completed next week, and the Salk Roof Project is also on schedule. However, there will be an additional timeline to complete that project, which will go past the starting of school, but all that work will be completed either after hours or on the weekends. Thank you, Mr. Cedidino.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have our outgoing HIB Coordinator for the District, Mr. Christopher McHugh, come to the podium. He's going to give us a report on our school self-reporting on the HIB process.
Good evening, Board of Ed. Mr. Cedidino, as Mr. Cedidino just said, Mr. Resnis will be taking over. In fact, he has taken over starting July 1st effectively as the HIB Coordinator. I enjoyed my time. It was great, but this time, I just kind of want to update the Board of Education and the public on the HIB self-assessment. I wanted to give you kind of an update of some of the changes that happened this year with the HIB self-assessment, the timeline that the state requires us to complete the assessment, as well as the scoring, and each year, the state asks that each school completes a HIB self-assessment. And the self-assessment goes from July 1st of 2013 to June 30th of 2014 this year. There's eight core elements that they want us to go through and answer various questions in those core elements. Core element number one is our HIB program approaches and other initiatives. Core element number two is training and Board of Ed-approved HIB policies. Number three is staff instruction and training programs. Four is curriculum and instruction of HIB. Five is HIB personnel. Six is school-level HIB incident reporting procedures. Seven is HIB investigation procedures, and the eight core element is HIB reporting. And in each of these core elements, there could be two, three, four questions that we have to answer together as a school safety team. And a school safety team is comprised of a principal, our ABS is at each school, which is either school counselor or our SACS. Staff members, it could be teachers, parents, as well as parents, and we sit together and we go through and answer each question, question by question, making sure we have the proper documentation. Documentation could be agenda meetings, minutes. It could be programs that we have done this year. It could be curriculum lessons, and we keep them all in a binder here. This year, there was 26 questions. Last year, there was 25 questions, and each question, you put a score down. If you did not meet the requirement, you put a zero. If you partially met the requirement, your score is a one. If you met the requirement exactly what the state asks, you put a two down, and if you exceeded the requirement, you put a three down in your score. So you answer all 26 questions, and you total up the score here. A 52 means that you met everything that the state says, so anything below 52 is something that's not good. I'm happy to say that all of our schools not only met but exceeded the score of 52. A perfect score would be a 78. So when you see scores like 73, 74, 75, those are very good scores by many of our schools here in the district. A lot of us are concerned and across the county that if people see a 72, that means they think, automatically think as a grade, it's a C, but a 72 is a very good score here. So like I said, all of our schools not only met but exceeded what the state has required. We also saw that this year, that many of our schools also went up in points. You know, last year to this year, they might have went up five, six, seven points here because we really asked them to look at the areas where they scored a two on and see how they can improve and score a three. And what's going to happen here is, and what has happened, is that all of our schools completed their assessment. We have sent it to Mr. Cedidino for his review, which he's been reviewing over the summer. Tonight, we have to speak about it at a Board of Ed meeting, and by September 30th, Mr. Cedidino has to submit it to the state and complete a self-assessment assurance that we did everything that is correct. And what was a little different this year is that we submitted it to Mr. Cedidino, and he has the right to send it back to us saying, I think you might need to make some adjustments. Your score might be too high. You might be needing a little lower, or you didn't score high enough. You might want to go back and reflect on that as well. So that was a change that happened here in the state. What the state is going to do is they're going to take all 15 scores, and then they're going to come up with a district score here. So what we anticipate is we're going to submit our scores in September. We probably will get them back at the first of the year, and from that point on, we have to again report to the public, as well as put them on our website, which all of our scores from last year are on our website for the public to review. So just in closing here, the state in May released the self-assessment. We had our schools, we gave them one month to complete them by the end of the school year, June 13th. Mr. Cedidino reviewed them over the summer. We have to submit them to the state by September 30th, and then from there, the state will review them, and sometime after the first of the year, February or March, we should get our scores back that we have to post on the website. Thank you.
Mr. McHugh, can I ask you something? You said they might be too high. What's wrong with being too high?
It could be that, under his review here, he might think that they did not meet the requirements. The superintendent has the right to go through and say, you know, if you scored a 76, maybe one of the areas or two of the areas, he didn't feel that you had significant documentation in those areas, and he can ask them to change it, or he can ask them to, if they scored maybe a 62, and we felt that, and he felt that they needed, that they did a lot of programs to go back and look, and maybe they can score a couple of points higher on it. So that was one change this year that the state gave the superintendents the right to send it back and forth to the schools for them to fix.
And the last part of superintendent's report, I'd just like the board to be aware of, is that today and tomorrow are very special days in the Old Bridge School District as we prepare for the 2014-15 school year. Everyone knows that the evidence states that the most important impact you could have on a child's success in the classroom and after school, as they enter their careers, is the effectiveness of the teacher that they have in that classroom. To that end, we've taken a lot of time to prepare for our new teachers who are coming in this school year through our teacher orientation process, and I'd just like to have our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, who heads up our professional development, talk about that process that took place today. Dr. Hoker?
Thank you. We had approximately 41 new teachers, long-term, they were a combination of new teachers and long-term substitutes, attend the workshop today. Our emphasis was on getting to know your students, taking the time in those first few days, setting high standards, and really providing them some inspiration and motivation and talking about why they became teachers and what our goals are as a district. We had our central administrative team came by, and they were introduced and provided some words of wisdom, and then we had several presenters. Kathy Gramata from the high school presented part of the day, Trish Barrett presented, and their goals were, again, working on classroom strategies, getting started as a teacher, providing some insight from their own experience, things to do, things not to do. We included a component of communicating with parents, making sure that the parents are fully aware of what's going on in the classroom so that they can support our efforts in school and support the students. As much as we want to hold our students accountable, we want the parents to be aware of what's going on so that they can carry through with that. Tomorrow, Lori Coletti is running the day, and she has several presenters set up as well. Phyllis Bloom will be presenting. Bill Rezes will be talking about the HIB. We also had today Terry Barlow from New Jersey Schools Insurance Company who presented the overview of HIB and affirmative action. So, you know, again, with that inspirational piece that we started with the morning, we also included the very important legislative components. And they'll follow through tomorrow with some professional development updates on how to write professional development plans, the SGOs, the SGP's, and that component. I also advise them, because it is, I think, once our new teachers get into the classroom, as administrators, we go through our motions of what we do and we provide updates, and sometimes, they get lost in the shuffle. So I've conveyed to them that we will have a follow-up, probably sometime in January or February, and invite our non-tenure teachers as well, just to keep that communication going. So it's something that I certainly enjoyed today, and I enjoy participating with them and molding our new teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Hoker, and at this point, I'm just going to let Ms. Kibler know that at next month's meeting, I'm going to ask her to present. She's been doing a lot of work on the summer at looking and revisiting our challenge program. We've always had a very wide-ranging challenge program within the school district, but now we're really looking to focus and really focus upon the needs of our truly gifted and talented students and increase our level of expectations for them through the projects and the expected learning outcomes we want with them, and maybe finding a new delivery mechanism to find those, reach those goals. So Ms. Kibler will be reporting on that in September.
All righty, thank you. Special correspondence, I don't think we have any. No, not at this time. Special committee reports, I don't believe that we've really geared up at this point. I know we have a few on the calendar coming up in the next few weeks.
Yeah, we're going to have a long-range planning committee meeting on Thursday, August 28th at 7:00 p.m.
August 28th?
Yes.
Was there a policy meeting scheduled, Mr. Solakowski? I know we were talking about that at the agenda meeting.
When it comes to policy, I'll discuss.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, at this point, facilities use, we need to have a motion?
No.
No, no motion today? All righty. Hearing of residents for agenda items only. We have some new faces in the audience. This is the time in which we give the citizen's re, tough word for me, a chance to speak about any item that's on the agenda. At the end of the meeting, there is another time at which anyone has the opportunity to then speak about any concern or any issue or to make comments in general, but right now, it's specifically about agenda items only. Okay? Is there anybody that would like to make a comment? No? Okay, thank you very much. Close that portion. Mr. Solakowski, we're up to policy. Would you like to speak now?
Okay, we had a policy meeting before school closed out, and we went over the following Board member, number and term, board member election and appointment, victim of domestic and sexual violence leave, employment of teaching staff members, outside activities. That one, we haven't finished up. Mr. Porcelli and I have a lot to talk about that one yet. Professional development for teachers and school leaders, professional development for teachers and school leaders revised, employment of support staff, this is mandated, outside activities, direct deposit, breakfast offers and lunch offers. This is what we spoke about in the past. We also have a policy meeting coming up in between the next, I guess, board meeting and the agenda meeting. I have to discuss what dates are available. Home instruction due to health conditions, student intervention and referral services, home or out-of-school instruction for students that have been suspended, electronic communications between teaching staff members and students, electronic communication between support staff and students, attendance suspension, removal of students for firearms, assault on district school board members, assaults on district members of, and education, removal of students from assault on weapons, expulsion and report missing abuse children. I have to change my glasses here, but we'll be discussing that at the next policy meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Solakowski. Curriculum? We need to have a motion to move items 1 through 15. I have a board member who would be willing to make a motion.
Dunn will make a motion to move curriculum 1 through 15.
Separating number 1 for discussion, though. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Mongan will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Okay, so we're separating number 1 for you, Mr. Solakowski?
Yes, discussion, yes.
Okay, at this point, any discussion?
Yes. All these, I guess you can call them administrators, that are taking off for several days and are going to different conferences. Are any of these conferences mandated by the Department of Education?
Mr. Solakowski, I believe that the Character Education Partnership conferences, that's part of the requirement of the national schools of character. That was written into the award when it was presented.
So it is mandated by the Department of Education, that one?
It's mandated by the district accepting the schools as national schools of character, that they're, they want those schools at that conference, and many times, we do do presentations at these conferences. Dr. Hoker?
We have, each of these schools is making a presentation at that conference, but part of the obligation in receiving that recognition is you're obligated to turnkey and support other schools and districts in furthering the development of character education.
So in other words, you're telling me that these four, these four conferences at the bottom of here, these people, they are mandated, and the rest aren't? That's what you're telling me?
Specifically talking about the Character Education Partnership, it is an obligation of the recognition component, which they're all participants in. The other items are not related to the Character Education Partnership.
Okay, so can, maybe we can do this. Put A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H on each one so we can vote on, I can vote on A through C or whatever it may be.
Yes, okay, let me just speak to Mr. Solakowski's question. One item that is on there that is mandated is the HIB training. Mr. Rezes is our HIB Coordinator for District, and by statute, must be trained in that, their position. The other ones are supported by their, the contract of the employee. It's mandated by the contract and the professional development allotment that the board has reached an agreement with these administrators. Denying them would be violating their contract.
Thank you. I'm going to put A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and then H on these, so I can vote that way.
You can refer to them specifically, Mr. Solakowski.
Okay, thank you.
There's also, just from a legal perspective, to answer your question, there is indirect mandatory training that comes out of these things. For instance, the New Jersey PSA, which is the Principles and Supervisors Association, the College Board Forum, these are things that are integrated into your curriculum, and although attendance is not directly required, from a legal perspective, it does support and protect your district to have administrators go into these things.
But aren't these things also available online? I'm sure they are. I can find anything online.
Everything's available online. It's a question of quality and quantity.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Solakowski, just for clarification, there are three additional for the Character Education on the next page, so you're asking about letters. I just wanted you to make sure that you saw that. Is there anyone else that would like to discuss curriculum? Okay, so we're voting, and we're separating number 1 completely, or certain letters, Mr. Solakowski?
We're separating number 1, and I guess we're going to have to use letters, with the letters that I said, plus three more letters.
Okay, is it possible?
Just say the first four.
Okay.
You can, as long as you describe it in a way that the minutes will reflect what you're voting yes or no on, there's no need to have letters.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Mara.
Okay, on items 2 through 15, DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Okay, motions 2 through 15 pass. Now, on motion, resolution number 1, if I say A through C, no, A through D, Mr. Solakowski, are you voting yes on those?
A through C.
A through D.
A through D.
Okay, I'm voting no on the first three, which is the College Board, the 32nd Annual Autism, and the four conferences. On the other ones that are mandated supposedly by the Department of Education on harassment and school character, I'm voting yes on them. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so let's just, let's just do it this way. I'll ask everybody for their votes. If somebody wants to vote no on something, just tell me no, and I'll add that negative as I've added. Mr. Solakowski's through A through C. So DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes, on all.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes, on all.
Solakowski excluding A through C?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes, on all.
Porcelli?
Yes, on all.
Andriani?
Yes, total.
Motions all pass.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion number 1 passes.
All right. Moving on to athletics, which is 1 and 2, I need a motion?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan, and a second?
Singh will second.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Any discussion? Most of these are coaches. I see no one looking to have a discussion. Mr. Mara, roll call?
Dunn?
Dunn?
Yes.
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Orsilly?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Andreani?
Yes.
Motions pass.
Thank you. I went to finance, which is 1 through 19.
Dunn will move finance, items 1 through 19.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any discussion?
Separation.
Okay, Ms. Mongan, what would you like to separate?
On the future bill list, purchase order 501714 to Heinella Board of Education for contracted custodial services.
Okay. Just one second. Mr. Mara, do you have? Ms. Mongan's?
Yes.
You know where that's placed? Okay, Mr. Weber?
Yes, there's a $30,000 payment to the US meters for our postage program. Given that we're in the age of electronics now, I talked to Mr. Mara earlier today, and I presume this is for various insundry mailings that come out of the school. And I would just ask the administration to take a look at it. I understand that there will be some replenishment during the year that, although I certainly would like to see the postal service remain healthy and financially viable, on the other hand, we have a responsibility to our taxpayers and to see if people are willing to accept electronic notification in lieu of a paid mailer and give them an option at some point and see where it goes, if we can save some money.
Mr. Weber, I just do want to bring you up to date on some of the changes that we have made in the past year, and we'll continue to expand upon them. I believe it's grades 12 through 5 now, or no, 12 through 3, we have gone to emailing the report cards home. Well, the report cards go through the real-time system, so we're no longer mailing them anymore. And that was in the past 3 years, and the progress reports as well. The only one they get is the final report card mailed home.
Any other discussion?
I would like to discuss the reason I've asked for the separation.
Okay, Ms. Mongan?
Okay. As stated at the agenda meeting, the reason I've separated payment to the Heinella Board of Ed, first of all, is because of the manner in which the bid was advertised and the questions that arose from vendors that did not know of the advertisement, because nowhere in the bid advertisement did it state contracted custodial services, and questions and inquiries made by the Department of Education, and approximately 7 to 8 billable notices on the attorney's bill to look into and defend the award of this bid to Heinella. There was only one respondent to the bid, $2.6 million. Without any overtime paid to this company, they could get paid maybe $3 million. Vendors that did request information and did voice their concerns with the bid because they didn't know about it, because when it was advertised in a local weekly paper in South Jersey, and only one bidder responded. So that was their concern. So for the manner in which it was bid, I cannot vote to for this payment. And the second reason is because we're paying for services that have not been completed. We're paying 2 weeks in advance. We're paying August 19th, we're approving cleaning for the month of August. August isn't done yet. On the bill lists here, if you look at every other vendor, Follett School Supply for support renewal, we've received that service. Scientific Supplies, we've received the supply. Utilities, we've received the utility. We're paying after we've been billed for the service. Attorney bills, the attorney has provided the service. Architects, the architect have provided the service. This company has not provided the service. And it's not even the company providing the service that's cleaning the schools. It's the shared service cooperative that is being paid. It's speculation. I don't know if they're being paid and not paying the provider until the 1st of the month. I don't, we don't know that. But we're paying Heinella on the 19th of August for cleaning done by ABM, which won't be done until the 31st of August. I don't know anybody else that pays their cleaning person for coming on August 31st and pays them on the 19th. So for those reasons, I cannot support this payment. Thank you.
Okay, first, Mrs. Hopman has asked me to clarify certain statements that were made at the draft agenda meeting and certain statements that were made here tonight. Early in 2014, bid specifications were prepared by the purchasing specialists for the district. They were distributed to interested vendors. The lowest awardable bid that was received was $800,000 over the amount that was budgeted for 2014-15 for cleaning services. Each acceptable bid, one was $3.6 million, the other was $3.4 million. The budget for cleaning services in 2014-2015 was only $2.6 million. This was clearly grounds to reject all the bids, and we did reject those bids. At that point, we needed to seek some additional options for cleaning services. It was late in the year in which to obtain these services. And I then requested Heinella, which provided a cooperative purchasing agreement for cleaning services, which was already in effect, to take a look at the bid specifications that were put together by the district and submitted to vendors. And it was clear from their analysis of our bid specs that the amounts of money that we were paying for wages to custodians over the last 4 or 5 years was exceedingly high in comparison to what the market rate was for custodial services. At that point, where I felt that this was an option that the district could entertain, I forwarded all the documentation to Chris Parton, the board counsel, who reviewed all the documentation and cleared it for submission to the board. In that discussion with Mr. Parton, he recommended, and it was not necessary, that we suggest to Heinella that they go out to bid for us for custodial services. But again, it was not necessary because there was already a cooperative bid agreement in place that we could participate in. The reason for going out for an additional bid was to do our due diligence, to make sure that the price was reasonable. And Heinella did go out to bid, did come back at $2.6 million and slightly a little more than that. However, they were offering an onsite supervisor, which we never had before, and they also provided a vehicle which we could use to distribute cleaning supplies throughout the district. Now, this is the second meeting where Mrs. Mongan has brought up this issue, and I respect your request for information, but I have to say that we paid All Clean Cleaning Services $1.8 million from January through June. And All Clean was a company that you recommended to this board to do the cleaning services, and you never asked one question about one of those payments to All Clean. Now, since you disagree with this selection of the board for this cleaning services, this is the second meeting where you're disputing the contract? You're disputing the terms of the contract, where we are required to make payment on the 15th of each month? And I'm not quite sure how to move forward with this. So if we are going to have this discussion every month, I would suggest to you that you advise the board what you would like me to do, and if the board agrees, I will pay them in a manner which may be inconsistent with the contract, but I will do that if the board directs me to.
When we paid any other cleaning service or any other bill, they completed their month, and we paid them in the middle of the next month. The procedure has changed for this vendor. I don't know why. I didn't see the contract that was signed. I have no problem with the way the board conducted its bid. The board did not know what was budgeted in the budget for custodial services because we received a summary budget in our workshops, as I've stated. And when the bids were rejected, I don't know if the Heinella Board of Ed revised the bids to reflect the fact that the Affordable Care Act would make changes and increase the cost to provide custodial services. My objection to this payment is that it's being paid in advance, and the manner in which it was bid in that it was not, nowhere did they advertise for custodial services. So how would anyone know that it was custodial services unless you were the vendor that was making, that knew in advance to make this bid? And that is my concern. And as far as questions, I've never seen where the board attorney has to, there are so many billable hours that I think that if this continues, whether it's Heinella or EIRC, where the board keeps having to spend billable time upon billable time upon billable time, it kind of negates any savings that could be generated. And I understand, I'm one board member, if it's the will of the board and everyone else is okay with this, fine, then I will just, in the future, continue to separate and vote no without comment. But I felt since this is, the last meeting was an agenda meeting, this is the first public meeting where we're voting on the contractual services, I had to state my opinion. In the future, I will just separate.
Mrs. Andreani, I need to respond to that.
No, wait. Mr. Mara?
Excuse me.
Okay. I'm pulling the president card here. At this point, Ms. Mongan had, we asked for discussion. Ms. Mongan, the way I understand it, is trying to explain to the public why she is voting no. Whether or not she is happy or satisfied with the approval or not is even not in question at this point. What my understanding is, is that she is taking her time in her discussion to inform the public why she would separate and vote no. So that's one issue on the table. Issue number 2, with billable hours for the attorney, I would like Mr. Parton to speak to that, if he wouldn't mind. Please do.
May I just address that first, please?
Okay.
Okay. Part of the, and Mr. Parton can confirm what I'm saying, when the bids were received for $3.6 million and $3.4 million, one of the vendors was very aggressive in insisting that we award them the bid, and refused to accept that the bid proposal was, their bid proposal was $1 million over what our amount was that was budgeted. They persisted in contacting staff members for a 2- to 3-month period, and it finally got to a point where we needed advice of counsel to address comments to them about the harassment over their not receiving the award of that bid.
Just to address the billable hours question, Mrs. Mongan, it's obviously your right and obligation as a board member to make sure that you're not throwing away taxpayers' money. I assure you that I have not bridged the gap of the $800,000 that you have saved by changing the way that this is done. There have been a couple of hours billed, and yes, I believe you read that it's 7 captions, because billing by the quarter of an hour. There are unhappy vendors in most bidding situations. Fortunately, in this case, Mr. Mara and I worked together to avoid any litigation, which would have been unsuccessful. We would have successfully defended the district, but we didn't need to, because we preemptively, to use the legal term, shut them up by laying out the law and laying down the law, which is important in the defense of this district. That happens a lot. You have, unfortunately, a target on you because you're a large school district. You get pursued legally from a lot of angles by a lot of people for a lot of things, and we have a very good record in defending that. The fact that they're unhappy vendors, while it's unfortunate, it's not headline news. And the department did look at this, the Department of Education, and has found that not only has the Board of Education of Old Bridge acted fully in compliance with law, but so has Heinella. And Mr. Mara did accurately lay out the history and the review of this matter. So not everybody is always going to be happy with everything, and needless to say, the 9 of you were elected to speak your opinions and vote your conscience. But there is no legal problem here.
Thank you. I just want to close with saying that, as a board member, I take the job seriously. I read every document that's sent to me, every bill, every agenda, every change, every addition. And I feel that I was the second highest vote getter in my first attempt for running for any board office. Based on my record, based on my record of 19 years of service to this district and my knowledge and education in the procedures involved in business office operations, and it's not my intent to cause any hard feelings or to cause any debate. I just feel it is my right as a board member to vote my conscience, and I just, in my good conscience, I could not support this, and in the future, I will just separate and vote no. I've stated my case, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mongan. Now, to Ms.
Mrs. Andreani, I have one question for Mr. Mara.
Okay.
Would it be possible to get this particular contractor on a 15 payment, on the 15th, for services rendered between the 15th and the 15th of the following month?
The contract calls for the payment to be made on the 15th day of the current month. And the reason why it's structured like that is because we typically pay our bills the 3rd week, as we're doing this week, and I have to send a check to Heinella, which they have to deposit. And it takes 5 days for it to clear in their account, and then they have to wait till their board meeting to pay the janitorial service provider. So it's a little bit unfair to expect, and basically a cleaning, so this cleaning agreement that we have and the one that we had with All Clean, it's basically a staffing agreement. So their out-of-pocket is their wages, there are no supplies. So I was very comfortable with paying them the way we're paying them. However, if the board would like me to delay payment until the 31st of each month, it'll be a violation to the agreement, but I'm sure Heinella would be willing to accept that.
Mr. Parton, question. I respect Ms. Mongan's point of view on this whole process, but my only question I have for you as a board attorney is, have we done anything where there'll be any kind of legal recourse? And if not, then I'm comfortable with moving forward with how we are approaching the janitorial services here in the district. So if you tell me that everything is done legally and there's no recourse on anyone's behalf, then I'm fine with it. So could you explain to us that everything is appropriate and everything is legal, and if so, then I'm comfortable with the decisions that have been made? And additionally, real quick, I'm sorry, paying on the 15th of the month, in the middle of the month, is the norm in the real estate industry. I deal with a lot of different vendors myself, and a lot of vendors like to get paid on the 1st of the month for the services that they'll be providing during the month. So it's not unheard of to have a payment in the middle of the month during services rendered.
Yeah, to answer your second question first, Mr. Dunn, it is not uncommon, especially because this money is passed along. You have a joint purchasing agreement at work here. So your money is paid to Heinella and then turned around, which they have to do by formal action, as Mr. Mara just described. But to answer your first and larger question, there is nothing whatsoever that the Old Bridge Board of Education or school district has done that is even close to any legal lines. You've acted completely in compliance with all the appropriate and applicable laws and regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Parton.
Okay. Mr. Weber, I was going to ask the same question as you did, to belabor the point that this juncture is not appropriate. But if there was a possibility in investigating or having open the dialogue with the company to perhaps bill instead of monthly, bi-monthly, if we could at least just?
Twice a month.
Twice a month? Is that a possibility? Is that a possibility?
Look, we have a signed contract with them. And when two parties agree to do this or that, we're expected... They're providing a staff for us to clean our buildings. And they expect us to, in consideration for what they're providing, give them what they're entitled to. But to just make one further comment, there are other bills that we do pay in advance on a regular basis, not just this district and any district. Tuition contracts to private placements are always paid in advance. Transportation contracts are paid in advance. So to make the statement that districts don't pay contracts in advance that they sign is not correct. And this... And in this particular case, we, as I said, we are not paying them in advance. By the time they actually get paid for July or for the current month will be the middle of the next month. And if there's any issue with the... And let me just back up by saying, the only reason why I would authorize a payment under this scenario is if the facilities management in the district has signed off on the PO that the performance that we expect is being provided. If the performance that we expect is not being provided, as we discussed earlier in this year before this contract or any contract that is awarded, we will not pay the vendor. But if the facilities management advises me that we're doing an excellent... They're doing an excellent job. Why would I consider going back to them and asking them to not live up... Not have us live up to our obligations under the contract if they're living up to their obligations under the contract?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mara. All right, at this point, Ms. Mongan, would you like us to continue to separate? Or would you like to just vote no? What is your pleasure?
I'm voting no on that PO.
On that PO? So can we just make that exclusion for Ms. Mongan and go through everything else at once? Okay, then can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Mara?
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
All motions pass with the exception... All motions pass, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we're in non-certificated personnel office, which is one through six. I need a motion to approve.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That was Mr. Weber. Any discussion? No hands? Mr. Mara, roll call, please.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Thank you. Number one, non-certificated personnel operational. There's only one item on the agenda for this section. May I have a motion for approval?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan.
Dunn will second.
Thank you.
Non-certificated personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no hands, Mr. Mara?
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Non-certificated personnel other, which is numbers one through... One through 22, as amended at the beginning of the meeting.
Dunn will make a motion, non-certificated personnel other, as amended, items one through 22.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Do I have any discussion on any of these agenda items? Anybody need more time? No? Mr. Mara, roll call, please.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber? Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Thank you. Certificated personnel? One through 34, including the addendum. May I have a motion?
Dunn will move certificated personnel with the addendum.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. May I have a second? Can I second?
Hartman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any discussion? Give you a few minutes to take a look. Mr. Weber? Surely. Would you like to read it? Okay. Item one is a retirement of a dedicated principal. Not yet. The effective date is January. Certainly sorry to see her go. Suzanne Miskowitz, Dr. Miskowitz, who is the principal of Cooper School, has turned in her paperwork to retire at the end of the current calendar year. So we'd like to thank her for her years of service. And I don't know if anybody else would like to make a comment at this time, but we certainly have time between now and December to do so.
I would just like to add to that that I've traveled extensively with Dr. Miskowitz for different workshops and in services. And I've really come to know her and appreciate her wisdom and her... One thing that you can never take away from her is her kindness. She might be the most kindest woman I've ever come across. And it'll be definitely missed as she retires. And I wish her well. For those of you who do not know, she just recently had surgery. She's recovering from that surgery. So her prayers go out to her, and we wish her the very best.
Thank you, Mr. Sinodino. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing no hands, Mr. Mara, roll call, please.
Weber? Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Our motion's pass.
Thank you very much. Non-certificated personnel transportation, which is numbers one through six. May I have a motion?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. I need a second?
Singh will second.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Is there any discussion on any of these agenda items? Seeing no hands, Mr. Mara?
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Thank you. Supplies, equipment, and services, one, two, and three. I need a motion.
Dunn will make a motion, supplies, equipment, and services, items one, two, and three.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I need a second?
Hartman will second.
One through four? Oh, with the addendum. I apologize. It's one through four with the addendum. Ms. Hartman will second. Mr. Dunn, are you still okay with that?
Yes, items one through three with the addendum.
Okay, thank you. Discussion at this point? Okay, Mr. Weber? You're not the only one, but you're first up.
Well, I'm getting feedback too, again. I'd like to know what the purpose of this purchase is and how they're going to be used and why we're purchasing them.
I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question? The last part?
Obviously, I should know what they're being used for. But I... Why specifically are we getting 200 more iPads and refurbished ones?
The technology for the classrooms for the full-day kindergarten was something that was budgeted for. And these items are exclusively for the full-day kindergarten. The reason we took the advantageous role of going towards the iPad 2s because it fits the platform that we are currently using and the accessories that we currently have. The newer Air iPads, while we could bring them in at a higher cost, would not fit the platform that we are using and accessories that we have, such as the keyboards that we're using in the classroom. So this allows us to have parts that can be interchanged throughout the building and used by everyone with the same charging stations. And additionally, you know, when we look at other districts that might be moving towards having used iPad 2 for... Such as Monroe used iPad 2 for a few years and then went to the Airs. We still feel there's value, great value in those. The company that we're using is very reputable and provides us with the same warranty and guarantee as the brand-new iPad 2s. So we felt there's a win-win situation and puts the technology in the hands that we budgeted for for the full-day kindergarten.
All right, so just for clarification, this $62,000-plus is already budgeted. It is not additional monies?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would like to separate number three for voting.
Okay, Ms. Mongan, we're going to separate number three for voting. All right, Mr. Mara?
Okay, for items one, two, and four, De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion's one, two, and four pass. For item number three, De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
No.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber? Porcelli?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion three pass.
Okay, thank you. Page 34, transportation, numbers one through... It's seven. Seven. And most of these are school routes, bus routes. May I have a motion?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Mr. De Prima, would you second?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? No. Mr. Mara, roll call?
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Thank you. Miscellaneous brings us almost to the end of our agenda, which is miscellaneous one through six. One through six.
Dunn will move miscellaneous items one through six.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singh. Any discussion on miscellaneous items? Mr. Mara, roll call.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Andreaani?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Thank you very much. All right, one of the last items for the board members and for the secretary of board business. Mr. Mara, do you have anything else to add at this time?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Hearing of residents. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment at this time? You would? Please come. Press the button. So you're on the microphone? I'd like to remind the members of the public that there is a five-minute limit. And press the button.
Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to speak today.
State your name and...
My name is Sandra Schaffey. I'm a parent here at the district. I have three students, one elementary, one middle school, and one going into high school. My high school student was identified by John Hopkins University as gifted and talented. He took the SATs and scored high enough. But unfortunately, he wasn't able to get into honors math when he entered Salk Middle School. At this point, he's taken classes through John Hopkins. It's online courses. They're not just any kind of online course that you can find. The kids have been specially selected. They've taken the SATs. They go through this extensive selection process. I've approached Dr. Farah to see if he could get placement into geometry because he's already taken Algebra I through John Hopkins. Unfortunately, that course is not board-approved. So there's really nothing that we can do... There's nothing that we can do to help him this year. But I just want to express my frustration to the board at he's a high-level, high-functioning kid who should be given an opportunity to flourish and to develop, just as well as a kid who has special needs. And unfortunately, because of the way that things are structured right now, they don't get a chance to do that. If they didn't make it into the honors program in sixth grade when they're really looking at their NJI scores from fourth grade, the child is really, you know, with his hands tied. And as a parent, we've done everything we can to enrich his education. Luckily, we can afford to do that. But it's just... I understand she's given me already the... You know, I have to go through the curriculum committee, which I'm planning on joining. And I have to, you know, get board approval for this course. And I understand the procedure. But I just want to express to the board that... And put it in your ear that online courses aren't bad. It was difficult for me to speak to Dr. Farah because, you know, it just... It was like, no, no online courses are acceptable at this time. But this is rigorous. And if a child extends themselves and tries to go beyond the system to get those gaps filled in that the system isn't able to fulfill, then they should be given the opportunity to flourish. So I'm hoping that you'll see me again and that we'll work together to help other kids like my child. Because unfortunately, you know, she told me in the future, with Singapore Math, kids kids will be able to, to flow through the system and be able to, to rise and, you know, show their skills. But my child wasn't able to receive that opportunity. And it hurts that he didn't get to do that. He will do fine. He'll get calculus in his senior year, and he'll, you know, work hard in the summer or whatever he needs to do, um, because he's that kind of a kid. But I just, I don't want to see other kids not get that opportunity. We should be bringing up our high-level kids and helping them flourish. And, and just like we do to our basic skills kids and our resource room kids, and we give them all the opportunity that they need, we should do that at the top as well. Because that's the only way that our district is going to rise. We need to, to be bringing everybody up on both ends. So I just, that's the only reason why I came here. I wanted to express that to you.
All right, take a deep breath. But I have a question for you. Is your child an entering ninth grader? Or a tenth, or a rising ninth grader for tenth grade?
He is entering ninth grade.
Okay. So, and, and I don't want to take, um, you know, speak for the administration, but you do understand that once you get into high school, it's, we have courses that are either online or enrichment. But if anything taken prior to entering ninth grade does not count towards a ninth-grade transcript, towards your high school transcript. So that might be one piece that you're missing of that puzzle to, before we even start any other discussion. And that's, unfortunately, that, that's the way all colleges will work, whether it's John Hopkins or it's a seventh and eighth-grade program at Harvard. It still works the same way, prior to entering ninth grade. None of that then will transfer onto a high school transcript for your child or for any child?
I wasn't asking for it to be on the transcript. The other kids that took Algebra in at Salk and are going into geometry or Geometry Honors, I, I know that colleges aren't gonna ask for their transcripts from their middle school. It's just, we just wanted placement, that's all. And he definitely can do the work. He's doing trigonometry work right now. He's just ahead. Putting him in Algebra I is really just not the right placement for him. But, you know, he'll double up next year or take summer school, whatever he has to do. But, um, it's just frustrating.
Okay. Thank you for coming. And again, we will, unless Ms. Kibler wants to address this at this point, otherwise, we could set up a meeting.
I would just expect...
Okay. Okay? We'll see if we can at least get some clarification for you, if not, a, a resolution. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. All righty. Since there are no, no one else is looking to speak, uh, board members at this time, do we have any old business? Is there anything that anybody would like to discuss? No? New business? No? Go to the order.
Yeah, I'll say a couple of words.
All right, Mr. Sulikowski.
Yes, I would like to wish all our new hirees, uh, much success this year with their new positions, their jobs, whatever they may be. And most important is, uh, hopefully, all the students will have a very productive year this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sulikowski. Anyone else? Should we, wanna stay on this side of the, side of this room, of the room? Mr. Singh?
I'm just happy to see some public today here so they can bring out some inputs to the board, and we can improve on that. So please coming back here and give your ideas through your, um, emails or you can meet administration or you can, uh, email any board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Ms. Mangan? Mr.?
I just wanted to, uh, wish all the parents and the children, um, success in the new school year. I've been out shopping, as I'm wont to do many times, and I see everybody buying their back-to-school shoes and their, and their, um, backpacks. And, um, first day of school clothes, and it's an exciting time. And I wish everyone a very successful school year. Thank you.
One more comment on that. You know, being a school teacher for thirty-six years, the first week of school, all these kids came in with brand-new sneakers. Everybody's real quiet because nobody really knows anybody. And then as time goes on, it gets a little, you know, the way it's supposed to be.
Okay. Mr. Weber?
Just as a comment to, um, Mrs. Chaffee's, uh, comments about her son, it, it would be, uh, it certainly would seem to be in the interest of the child and, and the district as a whole that we consider, uh, possibly setting up our own criteria for testing in, uh, i.e., uh, if, if the young man is capable of passing what essentially is the equivalent of the state algebra test, then I, I would ask that there, you know, there would be some consideration. Because circumstances change, levels of education change, and learning change from the prior test score. And somebody who could have been on the cusp now is more than capable of succeeding. And I think, uh, if, if they're gonna come forward and look for that opportunity, that hopefully, we, we should be able to establish some testing mechanism that will allow them to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. That's twice tonight I agreed with you. Mr. De Prima?
Yeah, th- thank you. I actually agree with Frank also. I mean, I did not know we did not have that available. No, I mean, if the child is, uh, exceeding what we're offering, then we have to accommodate. No question. Uh, other than that, welcome back, everybody, and let's continue to build, uh, what seems to be turning into a great, um, district. Thank you.
Okay. The room? Mr. Borsili?
Sure. Just to that point, I'm, I, I also agree with them that we, we shouldn't be holding any students back, but I, I also know that Ms. Kibler, um, will do all that she can do possibly to, to help our students out. And it's, it's great to see, um, students be so successful. I just hope everybody enjoyed their summer. I know it was a very shortened summer with last year's school year running so late through all the snow days and, and Labor Day being very early. So I hope everybody was able to make the best of it. I wish all of the, uh, students and, and, and staff, uh, most success, uh, for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. Mr. Dunn?
We're two weeks away from a new educational cycle. I know everyone's excited. I've been going through a few buildings. I've been fortunate enough to walk through a few buildings. They look magnificent, just like the first day should be. Everything nice and clean and pristine. And the buildings are coming along really nice. And I'm excited for a few different reasons. And the major reason is, is this year is our first year with full-day kindergarten. And I am very proud, and I'm looking forward to a successful year with bringing these young children into the system and giving them a full-day enrichment. And I think that it's going to propel our students to a new level. When we can get children at that age and give them the educational enrichment at five years old, I think that it's gonna pay dividends in the long run. Kindergartens are right paying dividends. I hear that enrollment has surpassed our expectations, uh, for kindergarten enrollment. And maybe the administration can share some numbers with us. But I think we're doing really well, and hopefully, if this continues, it will reverse the trends of the downward swing of enrollment and bring our roles back up to, uh, where they should be. So all in all, I think we're off to a good start. And in two weeks, we'll be back in the full swing of things. And I want to just thank the teachers and, and everyone that's involved with the district to get it ready for this coming year. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to a very productive educational season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Hartman?
Yes, I also would like to welcome everyone back to the new school year coming up. All of the teachers, all of our administration, everybody that's involved with educating the children in Old Bridge. We have a wonderful staff of people. We have wonderful children coming back. Mr. Dunn, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's one of the best things that we could have done was putting a full-day kindergarten into the township. It works in conjunction with our preschool program, which, the more education you give a child, the better they are. And so I just want to say that, you know, I'm hoping that everybody has a wonderful school year. I also have been to some of the schools, and yes, the cleaning has been tremendous. The schools look fantastic. Uh, I want to thank you, Mr. Mara, for explaining the information again tonight. And I'm also very glad that we are going to be putting iPads into the kindergarten classes because, to be honest with you, I have a grandson who is four years old, and he can do things on that iPad sometimes. I don't even know what he's doing. So if that's going to help our children go forward, because that's what it is today, technology, then, then it's a wonderful thing for us to be doing. I'm very glad we're doing it. And like I said again, I just want to wish everybody good luck in the new school year. And hopefully, we will get to see a lot of the things that are going on with these children throughout the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. I happen to have the opportunity, I was invited to be present this morning for the new teacher orientation. And seeing these young faces, I had flashbacks to forty years and forty pounds ago. And they, um, they're smiling and, and ready to go. And it was, it was very nice today. I didn't stay for the professional development. I just welcomed everybody on behalf of the board. I also like to mention that we are, we're now spending a lot of time trying to, um, knit the community, show community strength. We do that all year long, between the pinkout, between the football teams, between all Battle of the, Battle of the Classes and, and a variety of things. We had a softball game, uh, prior to the Walk for Life. We relay for life. Mr. Sididino received a phone call from one of our staff members, Kathy Honan. And she challenged Mr. Sididino to the ALS, the Lou Gehrig's Disease, the Ice Bucket Challenge. And she arrived at his office thinking she was going to have a meeting with Mr. Sididino to discuss the issue. When she walked in, Mr. Sididino said, "Are you ready? I'm ready to do it now." And there is a wonderful video of Mrs. Honan dumping ice water all over Mr. Sididino. He then put out a challenge to a few other people. And for those of you who do not know what this is about, it's all over the internet. There's celebrities. My son was challenged two weeks ago. You're supposed to dump a bucket of ice water over your head, and if you don't do it, you're supposed to, um, be kind enough and generous enough to donate a hundred dollars to the ALS Foundation. Mr. Sididino now has challenged the Board of Education. I have responded that, um, I'll take the hit for everyone, and I will do this. I actually brought a towel with me just in case there was a bucket of ice waiting for me this evening. I don't think that's going to happen tonight because I don't think we have any ice. But somewhere along the line, I will make my way over to the central office and be prepared to take one on the chin for, for everyone. And if there's anybody else on the board that would like to join me, please be... Ms. Mangan has her towel. She was ready to go as well.
This is an answer, honey. I'd love to. I did it on my own, and I would be glad to do it as a board member.
Mr. De Prima is in. I know Mr. Borsili has already, uh, done it on his own. He's in. Mr. Dunn has already said he would do it. Mr. Singh looks like he's in. And I can't speak for anybody else. You may want to take, uh, some time to think about it, but we'll see if we can work something out, and then we can challenge maybe the board attorney or a few other people. But I will tell you in advance, if I do it, we, we keep talking about shared services. So if I do, I, I will do it. When I do it, my challenge will be to my, my ward councilperson. So Alan Rosenkrantz, get ready. You're my district person. I am challenging you, and I will call you once the ice is over my head.
How about the whole council?
I don't want to do that. Let's, let Ms., let, let Mr. Rosenkrantz do that. All righty. I think I'm done. Congratulations to our one retiree. It's a great new school year. We're ready to go. And we're done?
Just one thing?
Okay, Mr. Sididino.
So I'd just like to wrap it up. One, I, you know, the important thing about those ice water challenges is that the, the funds and the, the acknowledgement goes out to ALS. And the research for that, from what I understand, is twenty-two million dollars raised just from this initiative, which is really quite a social phenomenon using social media. Kathy Honan, while it was important to her, her husband, Michael, has been afflicted with disease for the past four years now. Bridgette, her daughter, uh, was a student of mine at Salk in here when I was the principal of the high school. So it touches home. And our Dara Corliss is another secretary within the district for the OBEA.